Welcome. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delrayo City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 26th, six o'clock. And we're here we are in Charlestown Memorial Hall. Kim, could you roll us in? Councilmember Gagliotti.
Here.
Councilmember Lachel.
Here.
Councilmember Getzel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
Mayor Kerr.
Here.
I may, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, thank you so much to the dedicated public officials and city staff and citizens here tonight. Please bless every single person in the room with your grace and your wisdom so that every thought, every word, every decision will be truly pleasing to you. Thank you once again for your presence here. Amen. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council wind and rainstorms last week and over the last several weeks caused several significant issues in our city. As a result, council declared local state of emergency after a large sinkhole formed on a paved area behind Safeway. Storm drain pipe failed resulting in a storm on the leak that eroded the soil around the pavement. Ultimately, the pavement collapsed. Thankfully, no one was injured and no vehicles were on the pavement when it collapsed. The collapse does not impact our creek nor does it impact the access to the road behind Safeway or the access road to our garden center. We reported to regional, to the Regional Waste Water Program Manager, the Canadian County officials, Ken FEMA. And Public Works under the capable leadership of Ron Puji is overseeing Monterey Peninsula Engineering's repair of the sinkhole. Public Works and the city engineer inspected a crack from storming along the soil along Rosita as you started up the hill from the stop sign at Rosita. And Public Works began making repairs based on the advice from civil engineer, filling in and compacting the soil there to reinforce the street side. Public Works also removed a grieve from a large homelessness cabin in the city's former corridor parcel in coordination with the Delrayo Police Department. Public Works has been repainting red curves and beautified our light industrial area medians there by putting wood chips on those medians in the light industrial area as well. The work that Public Works has done over the last several months on our creek, clearing the storm drains in the creek area, has resulted in thankfully, no flooding due to the heavy rains. The creek flowed well and on out into the sea ultimately. And Public Works finally removed a big pile of dirt that was growing grass in the middle of our ball field and will continue to make incremental improvements on the baseball field. Staff published a call for bids for our spring street reconstruction project. Bids are due by 3:00 PM on February 28th. Staff anticipates bringing the construction contract to City Council for consideration at the March 26th meeting. There was a report of dumping of petroleum-based tarp-like material behind Safeway. Public Works cleaned it up and reported it to County Health and our police department is investigating the dumping. Public Works filled in the shoulder of Carlton Drive through the states to make the road edge safer for pedestrians and removed fallen eucalyptus trees adjacent to our garden center that had fallen during the windstorm and actually damaged a building there. And we're topping several of the remaining trees to prevent them from falling over in future windstorms. California Transportation Commission approved a $10.4 million grant to Tamsi, which will be matched by $2 million of local Tamsi Measure X funds to design and construct the first portion of the Fort Tag Trail around the county, which will be through our city. Tamsi held a public workshop on the Fort Tag project. The session was well attended by council, planning commissioners, and the public. It's clear that residents on Angeles have deep concerns about crime, homelessness coming into their neighborhood, and to a lesser degree, parking the traffic, all of which could ultimately impact our progress. Staff participated in a teleconference following the workshop with Tamsi staff and consultants concerning Fort Tag and the issues raised by our residents. Santa Clara Sheriff's officials were involved in the teleconference to share with us ways they've dealt with these similar issues on a trail that was constructed through their jurisdiction. Chief Point is prepared to address many of the issues and concerns of residents on Angeles when we reschedule public outreach on the Angeles that was canceled due to COVID-19. Mayor Kerr, councilmember Gagliotti, and Getzel met with, and myself met with Tom Labashi, CEO of Monterey Bay Community Power several Fridays ago. Meeting was very productive as it addressed our concerns regarding liability and agreed the rest of the council on that meeting as well. I subsequently met with Mike Willis, Monterey Bay Community Power person in charge of local community projects and electrification and the potential exists for the city should we join Monterey Bay Community Power to compete for a local power project that would be built on our four-door property. There would be a combination of solar and gas turbine that would power that development. And it's a, it's a pretty exciting possibility and would be in lieu of PG&E putting power lines out to that, to that property. Staff continued to work with several of our campus businesses seeking to locate and expand in Delrayo. It's a pretty dynamic and exciting time in that regard and we'll have a general report later on, on that. Staff met, staff met with Monterey Peninsula Partners regarding the option agreement on the four-door property based on direction given by council during strategic planning session. And staff anticipates bringing an agreement back to council in the next 30 to 60 days for consideration. We also met with our planning staff, line of time development staff to go over the many points that council directed during the strategic planning session, which we've got them moving in the right direction. Mayor Kerr and I attended the change of command ceremony at Naval Coast Graduate School where the newest, new president, Admiral Rondo, took, took her seat as leader of the Naval Coast Graduate School. The Navy Secretary, which president spoke very compellingly about the role of Naval Coast Graduate School in national security and I thought, I gave a really motivational talk to, to the faculty, staff, and students there. Chief Point attended an evacuation planning summit with regional public safety leaders, including the commanders of the Presidio and Naval Support Activity in Monterey. On the police front, our public, our police department made several arrests at the Safeway, at our Safeway. Officer Bazza, one of our new officers, was on duty on both occasions and responded quickly, demonstrating calm under pressure and made arrests in both cases. As chiefs mentioned to me and others have mentioned to me, police officers can go their entire careers and not experience sort of high-risk arrests and that sort of scenario. And Officer Bazza handled himself very well under pressure and under scrutiny of a lot of cameras rolling nearby. And when the time's right, his supervisors are working on it, we'll have a chance to recognize him or forecast him. The ROPD responded to an active shooter incident at Seaside High School, rendering mutual aid to our fellow department in Seaside and subsequent search that followed on the next day. Recent adjustment to emergency communications at the county where Delrayo's Police Department is sharing a frequency that Seaside Police Department served well in that case, giving us shared situational awareness and ability to coordinate on the fly during a, during an intensive, intensive search and reaction. Mayor Kerr, councilmember Gagliotti, and I had lunch with Matt Cuerta and a colleague from the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership Housing Trust specifically to discuss potential assistance with the city's housing element and other aspects of improving housing availability in the city. Staff looks forward to following up on, on that. Staff and the mayor met with Fred Meyer and Jim Cullen to discuss water issues on the peninsula. It was a very informative session with, with two people that know water on the peninsula very well. The planning commission met Wednesday and approved a conditional use permit for a cannabis distribution business, Sparks LLC, to operate cannabis business at the location of Russo's Produce in our light industrial sector. City staff issued cannabis business permit. Together, those will allow Sparks to move forward with tenant improvements and hopefully be operating here shortly. Staff met with FORA, Marina Coast Water District and Seaside County Sandation District regarding coordination of water and storage utilities provision on the Southbound Road Project. And finally, Mayor Kerr, councilmember Getzel, and Gagliotti and I attended Monterey Bay Peninsula Alliance Breakfast last Friday to hear former chairman of the Joint Chiefs, Mike Mullen, speak on a range of issues. The event was very well attended, highlighted our national security sector, and had closing by our Congressman Jimmy Penn.
So, we had two, sorry. I had two Monterey One board and board meetings and it was just kind of a fluke of a calendar, so I combined both those into that. The Seaside Water Basin Master did nothing, it was canceled, but there is one next week. And then FORA. So, on the Monterey One, first of all, I'd like to take some, some license here and give kind of a description of what Monterey One does, just because it's, it's such a critical piece of the water puzzle of the peninsula. And, and as well, the water discussions are becoming quite popular. And so, it's, I feel, I feel compelled as a member of the board is to kind of evangelize what they do and also ensure that some of the bad pieces gets out there. So, Monterey One was originally formed in 1972. It was a, it was a regional water treatment plant that came together. Prior to that, cities had their own treatment plants. They would treat them to varying degrees of treatment and then disqualify them in the bay. That didn't work. So, they, and the agency put together Monterey Regional Pollution Agency. They made the investment, they put the pipes down, and they brought everything in and they built the facility out by the dock. And that, and if they treated, they treated it to a regional specification and then they also went pumped it into the bay, but it was a much better, much better treatment base. In 1989, in response to saltwater intrusion, or seawater intrusion in the 180-foot, 480, or 400 photographers, which are, were Marina and Fort Orbi there, water, as well as Castroville farmers, Monterey One, or the precursor, which was Monterey Bay Ocean Control Agency, started studying the viability of reuse of water. And, and the intent was to provide that irrigation for Castroville. And then they would reduce taking water out of the, their local pumps and that would withstand some of the saltwater intrusion. That project ultimately became the CSIP project, was very successful and still in existence today. And it is, it is truly the only reason why Castroville can still produce some of the world's best art shows. I mean, they have the greatest, they have the greatest soil conditions and the environment to grow art shows, they just don't have the water, but then they do. So this was kind of a game changer. And this spurred, by that success, the agency began to then look for other opportunities to take dirty water, sewage water, and then make it into reusable water. And until September of this year, if all of this reuse of the last 20 years has only ever been for add uses, this is now, coming in September, will be moving into a re-supply and recharge drinkable water or into the peninsula's largest water holding tank, which is the Seaside Water Basin. So, and that will be the pure Monterey project. And that comes online again in September at full capacity. Monterey One will deliver 3,500 acre feet of water into the basin and then, and by contrast or by context, but then putting that in context, 3,500 acre feet, the peninsula uses somewhere between 12,000 and 14,000 acre feet of water, so this is that. The good news story here is that this represents one of the many new sources of water that's needed for sustainable water production within the region. So, and then there's also, there's, there's active discussion on, on expanding that capability, but after this phase one is in. So some of the meetings highlight, the, the board has kind of massive changeover. They've never seen a change like this over 40 board members of the seven boards and it's all newbies and we're all rookies. So it's, it's Nick Smith from Pacific Grove, Tyler Williamson, who we go up in Monterey, Jason Campbell from Seaside, actually Jason's not newbie, but, and then myself. The, we had a public comment from Public Water Now, which I think you went, I mean, they came in and spoke and then they had a, a meeting in Marina. And so that was, that was then. The major actions of the board were, we approved the caper and the paper, which is what we did that year. It's just basically the auto on the, on the, and then we just approved, and the reason I bring up some of these, these things with numbers is that this is our money. So we approved the $100,000 for some chemicals. We approved $222,000 for, it was kind of a gross discussion about a grinder. And then there was about $260,000, $260,000 for, for a SCADA integration service. SCADA is basically the software that runs Lance. And so, and again, the reason I bring up these numbers is that this is our money. This is, we're the payers and so we'll put it in the sense of this is a way of showing that this money is being well spent. This team is solid. I've done infrastructure development and these engineers are solid. This is, this is really, really good. And then, and then we got an update on Monterey One, or the Pure Monterey Project. And the following are the kind of percentages and whether we're on track. To kind of start, I will give a full kind of depiction of this at some point in time, but the big four pieces of the Pure Monterey Project, Pure Water Monterey Project is, there's dirty water in these drainage dishes. Then they put in infrastructure pumps, they bring it into the facility, they clean up, and then it goes into three different places. It goes either out to ag, in this tertiary cleanup, which is, they've been doing this for decades. Then there's this new facility, which is the Advanced Water Purification Facility. That is pure Monterey. That whole thing come back to here and then the rest of it goes out to the ocean. So, in terms of all those big blocks, there's taking the dirty water from these dishes, conveying it to the facility, then pumping it back up and putting it into injection wells. The dirty water part is the, or 76% down there. We're at 81% at the pure water, or the advanced water treatment facility. Can add 98%, both in all the conveyance infrastructure and injection well, which is up on General Gym, are both 98%. So we are well attracted to start delivering turnings on September. So that's it. And then one last thing is that last night was kind of the big hurrah was, we received, Monterey One received a $4.2 million grant from the Federal Bureau of Reclamation. This is, this is huge. Of the Pure Water Monterey Project, 48 million, it's a $40 million investment, 20 million of it has been kind of set offset with grants. And that again, that's, that is, that's our money, really. It's a, rather than $48 billion of our money going to this investment, it's now $28 billion. So, that was a, was a big thing. Seaside Water Basin was canceled. And then FORA, the, the core meeting was on the 8th, went to, or an indoctrination on the 7th. But the major highlights from that meeting were, one, congratulations to Kristen Clark for, for making it to, or consent, we approved her appointment to legislative committee. This is a big thing for Delrayo. FORA, it created a legislation, or which legislation to create FORA, it's going to take legislation to basically unwind it and into what, and then into, transition it into whatever it's going to be. Being at the table to write that legislation is really key. And so that's, it's quite, it's quite a good thing to have a Delrayo representative on the legislative committee. On the board, we talked about two different things. We have a transition report, which I'll talk to, or I'll speak out here very quickly. And then the approval of the consultants. They hired a consultant to manage bilateral jurisdiction, bilateral negotiations or between the jurisdictions as FORA goes away. That role was generally played by FORA and now the jurisdictions need to enter into kind of bilateral contractions to maintain the obligations set between the two. So they hired a consultant to do that. On the board, big thing was transition plan. So we have approved, or FORA has approved the transition plan, but that really, it's just a framework. And so to kind of discuss what was, what was agreed to and then the prioritization within that, I want to start with what does FORA do today and then talk about what it is that's being transitioned off. The main things that FORA do is, is it manages and it drafted the Regional Habitat Management Plan. This is a huge investment, it was a tens of millions of dollars investment. The direct benefit to, to the jurisdictions is that this is not, this does not have to be an investment that any, any one jurisdiction has to make. This took 15 years to, to, to draft. It's for 28,000 acres, FORA was 28,000 acres. Like, you know, by contrast, I did one for 8,000 acres and it took five years. So this is about how long these things take to make, they do it, it takes tens of millions of dollars. And again, the, the big benefit there is that it manages habitat within the environmental context of the habitat. It doesn't just look at a sliver of, say, a habitat which can either buy us high or buy us low. It looks at the entire environmental context. And this is, again, this is, this is a huge investment. So FORA made that. Infrastructure and planning, this is something too that is a direct benefit to the jurisdictions that are, that are associated with that. And that is, these are not investments that a, any one jurisdiction would have to make nor be beholden to any, any developer. If there is infrastructure in place, you are a land, a landholder, it changes the dynamic the, between you and a developer. If, if there is no, there, if there is no infrastructure, then you know, developer then can make that investment, but then again, it changes that dynamic. It's a lever. And so Southbound Road is a key example of that. FORA is making that $9 million investment in upgrading that road. We get the full benefit of that. And that then becomes part of our value and we can, we use that as, it's considered when we are talking to developers or a developer or whatever we, what we plan to do out there. It definitely helps in that regard. So that's a direct benefit. Those two things are direct benefits to, to jurisdictions. The other, the other thing that FORA does is the CFD, which is the Community Facilities District Funds. This will have to pass on. This is the money that FORA has been collecting from, it's either in development fees or in, in, in development fees and in land sales. That money is what is then prioritized and planned for and then put into these capital improvement projects. Marina has effectively, and made the largest investment because Marina is first in development and we have benefited from that going forward. Seaside, Monterey, and Delrayo, as we develop out there, that we will then have to participate in that CFD and that benefit will then be kind of transferred or sprayed, distributed throughout all of FORA. They also manage water rights, which is a big deal. They make loans. We, and they make grants. We receive hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants from, from FORA. They manage the ordinance clearance and they, they maintain the administrative record, which is, which is a huge federally administrative part of any kind of land use development. So they have been at the project office for the last 21 years. And what's kind of unfortunate is that they have not gotten full recognition for what they have done. But we, as a small jurisdiction, we have eaten up actually a large amount of value in their, in their existence. And so as they transition, we want to ensure that we still have that. And so that is in the infrastructure investment, in this habitat management, and in the CFD management, as well as in managing of the administrative record. So with all of that, that's what FORA does. The transition pieces now, I mean, what, what, what the board is kind of proposing is the following. We will transfer basically the overall management of FORA, or at least kind of some of the administrative parts of what FORA does to LAPCO, which is the Local Agency Formation Commission for Monterey County. Tamsi will take over the transportation upgrades and, and planning and infrastructure investment there. Marina Coast will continue to collect the bay of water. Seaside will actually take over the ordinance clearance management. And then the county, right now, has been identified to hold the CFD, but that's not something that they, that they want to do long-term. So something has to basically be created and agency, something that the legislature has to be created in order to manage this, this CFD. And then capital, you know, improvement projects, that, that prioritization, everything that's, that's still on this list of, this to-do list, needs to be prioritized and then funded. And that's, that's a wide open, it's wide open. Our, our Southbound Road project is, we made it, you know, to the cut, but there's a lot of other kind of infrastructure obligations that are out there that are just, there's, we don't know what's going to happen to those. And then the habitat management, you know, it's just, that means that funding is kind of unresolved right now as well as the, so that's what the board's going to be taking on over the next, well, the next 18 months, but hopefully we're going to have better clarity on these, on these things in the next few, three months.
All right. Thanks for explaining some very complicated topics. Councilmember Getzel.
Good evening. I attended, just for informational purposes, 30 January United Veterans Council of Monterey County meeting and the 7th February Fort Orbi area retired, retired soldiers council meeting. I did orientation on the 11th of February and attended the 12th February Mosquito, North Salinas Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board meeting. They're responsible from basically Soladad North. They were formed in actually 1950 when the Army Corps of Engineers unblocked the mouth of Salinas River to build the Los Alamos Harbor. And as a result, there were huge investments in mosquitoes. So, name speaks for itself, mosquito abatement is their management mission. The board meeting primarily discussed the lease on the current building, which is on Airport Boulevard in Salinas. Land is owned by the City of Salinas and their lease is coming up for renewal. This impacts you because you look at your tax statement, there's a small amount in there that affects the mosquito abatement that could be impacted if they have to pay more on their lease or find a location. They have a YouTube channel, it's kind of neat, you can go on, it's called N as in November, S as in, he is Victor, not Salinas Valley, Mosquito. And they have a number of episodes showing various efforts in various areas of their abatement efforts. They have two drones, one for reconnaissance, one that's going to be used for spreading abatement materials. These drones can, are more accurate and get into smaller areas than the current method of spreading abatement by chartering helicopters and will be cheaper. The only thing that they're pending right now is FAA licensing. FAA was on hiatus due to the federal government slowdown, closed down. They should be back up now and all the five employees will be licensed to fly the drones. I also did orientation and attended a meeting of the AMBAG, Association of Monterey Bay Area Government, covers Stan Creve, San Benito, and Monterey County. It is a, primarily a planning entity and it's funded by federal dollars. They do have a planning commissioner academy to train our planning commissioners. I discussed that with the city manager, it might be something that our funding commissioners can pin. They have an energy watch program. They did provide the, with their analysis of power, of city's success in managing greenhouse gases and reducing emissions. Some of the things that they're looking at is something new, not only within AMBAG, but in California in the future, decarbonization in buildings, which means not only going to solar, but also not providing actual gas, not having gas furnaces, not having gas stoves, all of which are carbon intensive, not as intensive as coal, but still not bad to the AMBAG, one of the things that they talked about, again, as John said, this is your money. They have fallen, they have fallen behind on their compensation as compared to other agencies and entities and are having a hard time recruiting and retaining employees, especially the high skill level of some of their project officers. And so the board did vote to do some uproot step increase on all their employees, but not automatic, it's really meritous. During my meeting, orientation meeting, I found that AMBAG has a specialist that on housing planning and is available to assist us to a certain extent. on housing planning and is available to assist us to a certain extent. AMBAY, as an entity of AMBAY, we are entitled to ten hours of these services. You know, it's not clear that's a month or, I suspect, a year. AMBAY does have a nonprofit organization that's associated with it. And any additional work that we ask them to do for us, we get every bit of it. That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The strategic planning, which we all attended, as well as the police chief and the city attorney and the city manager, and there were also several residents of Delray Oaks in the audience. Everyone worked together so well and it's, I think it's just a wonderful way for the council to get in an informal setting to discuss matters, bring up things that we can't normally do. And so it turned out to be very, very good. And it will, it's the, the video of it is on the website under the City of Delray Oaks. And then if you click on the update strengths and accomplishments from the strategic planning retreat, you will be able to view it. And there've been a lot of negative posts on Nextdoor, and I hope some of the people that are doing that posting will take the time to review just what the city staff and the city council has accomplished in the last three years. And Marilyn Snyder, who is our facilitator, was excellent again, as was her assistant, Michelle. I attended the most recent Neighborhood Watch, she was hosted by Daniella. And in attendance there was our police department, a seaside fire, as well as many residents. The seaside fire presented a wonderful program, including, excuse me, including the necessities for your emergency pack in case of some type of an emergency. The seaside sanitation meeting was canceled this month. I attended the TMC presentation regarding FORTE, which was at City Hall here. It was very informative, it gave the residents an opportunity to express their opinions on this project. Unfortunately, as the city manager mentioned, the demonstration on Angeles was canceled due to bad weather, so it'll be coming up soon. Community Human Services, I attended the celebration and reopening of Safe Place. It was closed for several months for major remodel. I was impressed with the results of the remodel. The Safe Place is a comprehensive program for runaway homeless youth and youth at risk of becoming homeless. And the residents of Safe Place now have access to facilities to bathe. There's a washer and a dryer, a kitchen, food, clothing, they can exchange clothing and a bath. And the services also include crisis intervention, education, and counseling. And the facility is located on Pearl Street in downtown Monterey. The notice of funding availability for the HEAP funds, H-E-A-P, was issued on February eighth. H-E-A-P stands for Home Emergency Assistance Program. Applications for HEAP funding must be submitted by April first. Community Human Services is planning to apply for several of these projects, including a shelter for adults and to apply for, oh, a shelter for adults on the peninsula and a daycare center and a possible shelter for homeless students in Salinas. The peninsula application will be made in conjunction with gathering for women, which is very organizationally similar to Community Human Services. The board approved the proposal to master lease under rental unit next door to Genesis House in Seaside. And that will be for still a living environment for women. This would allow women who graduate from Genesis House to move into a safe, supportive environment, thus strengthening them for recovery. I also attended Seaside City Council the other night. One of the items on the agenda was to receive an update and discuss potential HEAP grant applications, including potential homeless shelter locations. One of the locations is at twelve ninety-two Broadway in Seaside. This location is county-owned and is currently zoned for a shelter. There was much discussion by the residents, as well as city council members. The decision was not an action item, therefore they could not take a vote on that. But they did do a straw vote, and there were three approved using that location and two who were opposed to it. Well, based on the straw vote, the providers, the three providers of shelter operations were invited to make a presentation, which will be tomorrow. And one of these providers will be Community Human Services. I attended an interesting lecture presented by NIST, the Middle Bear Institute of International Studies in Monterey. And it was on the updates on local and government global activities. Their degrees include a focus on areas of local, national, and global importance. The NIST programs include Center for the Blue Crime, Center on Terrorism, Extremism, and Counterterrorism, Custom Language Services, Summer and Intensive Language Program, James Martin Center for Non-Politification, Politification Studies, and Mixed Methods Evaluation, Training, and Analysis Lab. It was really interesting talking with the professors and the students, as well as the lab researchers. Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group, we have no meeting scheduled. However, we delivered three welcome baskets to new residents of Delray Oaks. And these, Terry Neese, who is a volunteer in the organization, prepares these beautiful baskets, they're just gorgeous. And one of the ones that, one of the recipients, I returned to talk to them about the Neighborhood Watch program. She said she was so excited to receive this basket, she took a picture of it and emailed it to her mother, saying what a wonderful community she'd been moved into. I thought that was really exciting. So these do affect the residents and make them feel welcome. And thank you to Terry for all your hard work in creating these wonderful baskets and for the Citizens Action Group for all that they do for our community. Thank you.
So thank you, John, for mentioning that appointment. That appointment was recommended by Jane Parker. And I accepted it. So yes, we have work to do. I attended MST. We're very worried about the shutdown and the impacts of the shutdown. We renewed a one million dollar line of credit extension because we have a lot of grant money that's out there. We're trying to build a new facility down in King City. So we have some projects that are maybe behind a little bit. It takes about three to four months to make up the difference, to get some of that money back. And so by adding this one million dollar line of credit, at least we can keep the buses going. So that was good. MST also was on February sixth, had a ribbon cutting for the new MST Mobility Center, which I mentioned before. And it's up fifteen Limpin' Avenue and this center is dedicated in the memory of Alma Malanda. And I was privileged to be able to meet her. She's a quadriplegic that, she just wanted to be, well, her, in her quotes here, it says, "MST gives me my mobility." So as a quadriplegic, she got around, she was a very inspirational, very kind, nice person. And she was deceased, so it's kind of sad. Her whole family was there, it was quite emotional. But it was a very nice dedication. The project was funded by measure Q, the local one-eighth cent sales tax for transportation services. And if you're not aware of all the mobility services, I will leave this here. I don't know if we have that up, we do? Okay, so you can pick that up. There's all sorts of things. And if you live forty miles away from, you know, a bus, because we're in a rural area, if you can't get to a bus stop, we do have a program that you can actually drive somebody as a private driver and get reversed by MST. Also, I just want to remember all veterans, you get a fifty percent discount. So you have to sign up, you have to fill out a form, sign up, and yes, we give all veterans a fifty percent discount to ride the bus. I think that's it. Oh, one more thing. We got an award for, this is a program, it's from TMC, it's an award for, it's Ride the Forty's on Us. So on holidays and weekends, if you ride a forty, which is mainly in Salinas, you ride for free. So it's kind of a nice little system and we got an award for it. So that's it.
Great. Okay. So I'll talk about quite a few things that you've already heard about, so I'll go over those fairly quickly. First and foremost, with the strategic planning gathering, which came up with our goals for the next three years, as well as tasks for Dino for the next six months. So we'll be, we'll all be busy, as you can tell. The city manager and I met with Maury, the owner of the Delray Oaks Nursery, and CSMB hydrology students to talk about the area behind the Saquay and possibilities that I believe we'll be hearing a presentation next month. I went with the city manager to the MPS Change of Command, our new president, Admiral...
Rondo.
Rondo, yes, I think that, Rondo. I work at MPS, so those change of commands are always interesting to see, also that our work is going to be cut out for the next several years. I also went to the Monterey Institute Impact Event. Interesting to hear from faculty and students the focuses that they have and how they're impacting not only us regionally, but also nationally and internationally, their names, dates. I went to the mayor's monthly meeting at Salinas, where we heard all about, they're doing a lot of stuff with potential training, homeless shelters, I mean, there's some stuff going on in Salinas, so that was interesting. I also went to the Water Authority Board Meeting, where we elected the board roles for the next six months. I attended the Marina, the City Marina Planning Commission meeting, where Caroline was requesting a permit for the D cell plant. It was long and a lot of people had a lot of opinions. They ended up declining the permit. City manager and I met with Fred Muir and Jim Cullen to start understanding the complexities of our water situation better. That was very interesting. I'm continuing to meet more and more people to just understand the breadth and depth of everything that's going on into the decisions that will be made over the next six, nine months that will affect us for a long time. I had a brief meeting with John Lehr, who is running for state senate, wanted to understand support and how he may be able to help Delray Oaks. We had our monthly What's On Your Mind early February. Councilperson Lindtelle and Gagriati joined up, so that was fun. There were probably, I don't know, ten, fifteen people. We talked about the strategic planning results and how some of your suggestions have been implemented thus far. I also attended the FORTE, the first public meeting here, and I'm looking forward to the presentation out on Angeles when that gets rescheduled. We had a great lunch with the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership folks in regards to possible membership and potential help with our housing element that we're behind on. I was also part of the finance committee. You'll hear more about the mid-year review and the allocation of some extra funding, which is exciting. I attended the Seaside homelessness listening meeting at the Old Meyer Center. Again, another very packed and passionate group of folks talking about a potential shelter brought up by the HEAP funds. It's a pretty exciting, the ten million dollars that are coming into the county for homeless shelters is creating a lot of discussion about who, what, when, where, why, not necessarily why, but how. So the RFP, I believe, is due, they're asking for proposals from all kinds of nonprofits and organizations that are, that organize services. And so that will be coming up pretty quickly, I believe at the beginning of next month. And then we'll know in the next two or three months. So that's pretty exciting. I also attended Monterey Bay Defense Alliance meeting to hear retired Admiral Mullins. He's very strong. It's always interesting to hear what a person at that level says when they retire from the military. They're a little more open and a little stronger. And so it was fascinating to hear, I mean, you have to say, kind of a game in the world. I also attended the Neighborhood Watch. I don't know when the next one is, but probably in a couple of months, if you're not involved, we would love to have you involved. We're still looking for block captains, especially over on the south side, so if you're interested, let us know. And then tied to that, the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, training just began last Saturday. Daniella and I and Jerry Orton and another woman that lives on Portola is taking it. And we learned to splint and put people on backboards and we were triaging people in the Monterey Fire Department. So again, if you're interested, invaluable work for our first responders, as well as our neighbors. So if you're of that ilk, I would really suggest considering taking that training. And that is it for me. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone like to pull any items from the council? Or, no? I can entertain a motion? Do the public like to pull any items? Okay. I would like to entertain a motion, so I'll pass. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. There were a couple of things on this I just wanted to mention to everyone. Consent agendas are generally a lot of housekeeping, unpaid bills, police activity report, things like this. On this, if you look at C two, we have an engineering services agreement, and we're looking at property lines for the trees that are falling, just to make sure that we understand, you know, where everything is and how healthy everything is, so when we're topping trees, it's preventative measures. Administrative hearing officer, we have an application. So Andy Clark will be one of our new... So Andy Clark will be one of our new administrative hearing officers. We do have one more position open, so if you're interested, let us know. And then the last thing is the sinkhole behind Safeway, so we're getting that fixed. We have no old business. The next item is our new business. First thing up is our mid-year budget review, and I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. The item before council is to review and approve the mid-year budget review and amendment till fiscal year 1819, as well as an amended fee schedule. I want to thank the staff, prepared to who's not with us tonight, our finance consultant and Kim Mainly, as well as the finance committee consisting of Merrick Kerr, council member Getzel, and a resident and former council member, Dennis Allian, for the tremendous work on looking hard at this item as well as other budget-related items and making us stronger. Mid-year budget represents $4,855,506 in expenditures, which is a $110,000 increase from the budget you approved in July. The budget is financed by $5,335,000 in revenues, which is a $3,337 increase from the budget you approved previously. This will generate a surplus of $480,470, which is in the aggregate, a decrease of $107,000 for the 1819 budget, and that's based on an increase in expenditure projections as opposed to revenue projections. They are detailed, the expenditures and revenue changes are detailed in the staff report. I won't go over them in detail now, but happy to answer the questions there. The only other comment I'd like to make prior to concluding is that we are amending the fee schedule to remove the RV storage fee, since we moved the RV storage lot to the airport and no longer required that fee on our schedule, and we are removing the dog park fee, which is estimated to, that will cost the city approximately $500 in revenue, a cost that the city is well positioned to accept. And I'd just like to point out that we're keeping in place all of the requirements for registration and vaccination associated with the use of the dog park, but we're removing the fee from the PCE. And any of your questions?
Any council comment? No, any public comment?
I have a public comment, I mean, and I don't know if you're aware of it, any one of you, but on Quendale and Portola, when it goes south, there is a caution sign on Portola, coming from Carlton. You know, when you come from Carlton, Portola and Quendale, on the Portola sign, there is a caution sign for traffic to come on, but I know that people, either they don't see it, or they're not paying attention, and I just pray...
I mean, we're just doing public comments for the mid-year budget review. We'll do the public comment afterward.
Definitely. I have, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And Mayor, the next agenda item before you is to consider authorizing participation in public agency's post-employment benefits, Section 115 trust program. Before I turn this over, we've got Rachel Sanders here that's going to present to the council and the public on the program, what it is, and the benefits of the law for the city. What I'll simply say before I turn it over to Rachel is, this is a mechanism that's relatively new, that allows the city to establish a revocable trust into which we can put money for various specific purposes, and that is to reduce our unfunded pension and healthcare liability for retirees. And so, and based on decisions that we will make at a later date, not tonight, the council can decide how much money to put in. So tonight, you're only being asked to establish the trust and let us put in motion the vehicle. At a later date, we'll be returning with a recommendation on future fund allocation to that trust. It's a tremendous new vehicle that allows us to start to make a dent in our unfunded liabilities and do so with total control of the money, rather than sending it to Sacramento, and at potentially a higher interest rate than we are able to get in other investment vehicles. So with that brief introduction, I'd like to turn it over to Rachel, and thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The mayor is glad to be here. My name is Rachel Sanders, as mentioned, and I work for PARZ, Public Agency Retirement Services. Thank you for that great introduction to the 115 trust, which I'm going to provide some more detail on tonight. So to get started here, I'm going to give you an overview of the three entities that are involved in this 115 trust arrangement. So there are three companies involved. You have PARZ on the left-hand side. For those maybe not familiar with PARZ, PARZ stands for Public Agency Retirement Services. We are a private company that works exclusively with public agencies, mostly here in the state of California. So we work with cities, counties, special districts, school districts, community college districts. And really what PARZ's role is in this arrangement is to help you get everything set up. We do all of the legal documents and compliance back work. We are the company that actually applies for the private letter ruling, so the IRS and BLS are 115 trusts. We do all the ongoing record keeping. We'll make sure to keep the three of private statements. We monitor any money that's coming into and out of the trust, and really serve as your liaison. What PARZ doesn't do is actually handle the money, so we're not a financial institution. Our trustee serves this fall to US Bank, which is there in the middle, fifth largest bank in the nation. They do provide all of the oversight protection for the assets and serve as custodian, as well as a planned fiduciary. Ultimately, you'd be sending money to US Bank, not PARZ. And then last but not least, there's the Highmark Capital Management, the company on the right. They are a sub-adviser to US Bank, and they handle the investments for this 115 trust program. So as I'll explain as we walk through the presentation, the district, excuse me, the city does have choice in how to actually invest the funds within the trust, and ultimately we bring out a portfolio manager to help make a recommendation and give you ongoing updates on the investment performance as well. So as I mentioned, PARZ does have a private letter ruling for our IRS-approved combination 115 trust, and the trust is structured as a combination trust, meaning it has a dual purpose that can be utilized as any city needs it. So the easiest way to explain this is sort of with the graphical representation of two different buckets. So on the left-hand side, you have the OPEB bucket, that addresses what is now Gatsby 75, your retiring medical benefits.
Could we tell everyone what OPEB stands for?
Of course. Other Post-Employment Benefit. So that would be your retiring medical costs. And then on the right-hand side, you have the PRST bucket, which stands for Pension Rate Stabilization Program. That addresses Gatsby 68, which is your pension liability. So the city can opt to address either one liability or both within this main trust, but it would be accounted for completely separately. So any money that you're pre-funding for your retiring medical liability would be accounted for separate from the pension liability. You can also actually invest the fund differently within each account as well. So again, a lot of flexibility how you ultimately potentially fund this program. For those that may be less familiar with a Section 115 trust and its purpose, it's really a vehicle that can be used by local governments to pre-fund essential governmental functions, such as retiring medical liability or pension liability. The nice thing about having IRS approval on a 115 trust is that it ensures that any monies in the trust are taxed and debt, which is good. The irrevocable design really ensures that monies that go in for intended liability can only be taken out for that intended purpose. So if you put money into pre-fund pension, you can only reimburse yourself for pension costs or otherwise transfer those funds to helpers at any point in time. So again, the monies can't be used for reasons other than the liabilities that you're pre-funding for. Now, what I'll show you on page five is your current pension funding status. So for those that may or may not be familiar with the current pension status in California, helpers did announce back in December of 2016 that they would be lowering their discount rate from 7.5% down to 7% with a three-year phase-in. And really, I'd like to explain it as a Teeter-Totter effect. When the discount rate goes lower, liabilities go higher, unfortunately. And so California agencies are really feeling the pressure of having to contribute more to helpers because of the lowering of the discount rate. So what you'll see on page five are your current liabilities. So the actuarial liability as of June 30, 2017, is posted on the helper's website, is just shy of $6 million. Assets, about $4.4 million. Your unfunded liability, about $1.5 million, which is 75% funded, is actually a little bit better than average, so that's the good news. So at the latest city conference a couple of weeks ago, averaged 71%, so kudos to you, you're higher than average, which is good. The estimated employer contribution per fiscal year 1819, right around $320,000. And we did actually factor in the additional states the employees in Argos and Maddox and the city. With our projections, we would assume that by fiscal year '24, '25, the city's cost to helpers are likely going to go up to about $593,000, which is about an 85% increase. So that's unfortunately pretty standard across states to see these types of increases. Again, helpers set to lower to 7% now, but if anybody gets into whether or not they may lower that discount rate again in the future. So this is again a way to be proactive with addressing those type of costs. So why pre-fund pension obligation? As the city manager mentioned, this is a relatively newer tool that cities can use. We actually have 100 leading agencies in California that have adopted it, since we rolled it out in 2015. But it used to be that prior to the establishment of a trust for pre-funding pension, really the only option that cities had was to spend extra money to helpers above and beyond what you're required to pay. So the main reason that a lot of cities use like this option as an alternative is point number one, complete local control over assets. Rather than sending money to helpers where you lose all control of how they invest your funds, how it's spread out over time, you realize that you're never going to be able to get that money back, and it's sort of a moving goal. I mean, you may lower your liabilities temporarily, and then they change some assumptions, and suddenly your liabilities grow again. In this particular arrangement, you do have full control of flexibility, meaning you determine how much you put into the trust, when you put money into the trust, when you take it out, and how you invest it. So if you want to invest at a level that's potentially a little bit more conservative than how helpers are doing it, you have the ability to diversify, which is a great benefit. Number two, pension rate stabilization. A lot of cities see this as a stabilized, more smoothing tool, seeing that those increases are coming over the subsequent years. It gives you good peace of mind knowing that you have those assets available to draw down and supplement your payments to helpers when you need the money. So hopefully, it wouldn't be as big a hit on your budget, you could simply pull from the trust and use it again to supplement your payments when you need it. We actually had one council member utilize the term "the ultimate rainy day fund" when we were presenting this trust concept. And the reason for that is that ultimately, the trust is revocable in the sense that you can put money in for pension, it can only come out for pension, but certainly your pension costs are always going to be one of the biggest portions of your ongoing budget. And so if there was, you know, hypothetically, an emergency in your city, maybe you had, you know, funds in your general fund that you were going to pay to helpers, those had to be moved over to address that emergency, pull money from the trust, use it to pay helpers. At any point in time, all funds in the trust can go directly to pay for your pension costs. So it really is like a rainy day fund in that sense, that you know those funds are going to be there for your pension needs. And then last but not least, diversified investing. So the great thing about this trust that I've mentioned is you do have the ability to diversify. In the next couple of pages, I'll show you the government code sections and how they differ from your general fund to the 115 trust. But investing in a trust allows you to actually invest in equities, which you can't do in your general fund. So if you're able to set money aside for a period of time, you can actually help those assets grow by earning more interest than you otherwise might do in your general fund. Now, switching gears over to the OPEB side of the trust, I did want to share with you your OPEB liabilities as well. So again, these are your retiring medical liabilities. This data is from your 2017 CAFER, and luckily, this liability is much smaller than your pension liability. So at your 2017 CAFER, you are showing an actuarial approved liability of about $248,000. The city is currently giving you a way to, what's known as a pay-as-you-go method, where basically, when we have a retiring medical cost come due, we take it out directly. What this slide shows you is the benefit of pre-funding, and a lot of that has to do, again, going back to this concept of discount rate. Just like I mentioned, the Teeter-Totter effect, where the discount rate goes lower, liabilities go higher, that should go the opposite way, is pre-funding your OPEB liabilities. So what you're getting here is you can see a discount rate of 4%, that's a standard pay-as-you-go discount rate. If you move monies into a trust and you're able to invest in equity, your effective rate of return is going to go up from what would typically be in your general fund. Therefore, an actuary would give you a higher discount rate, which in turn lowers your liability. So it's pretty, kind of the opposite of what I explained, so it's a good thing. So theoretically, just by pre-funding into a trust, you could lower your overall OPEB liability by 30 to 36%. Because the rule of thumb is, for every 1% you increase the discount rate, your liability is actually going down 10 to 12%. So a lot of your benefits is pre-funded OPEB as well. Again, some of the reasons why pre-fund OPEB, a lot of crossover between why pre-fund pension as well, but a couple of things obviously would be the benefit of higher discount rates. Another thing I didn't mention is that oftentimes, we have agencies tell us that they've gotten approved credit ratings because of pre-funding into a trust, which is always a good thing. And also, GFOA actually does prefer this best practice, so it's global upon if you do old, if you like, this strategy. Okay, so now to kind of hone in on the investment flexibility. As I mentioned, there are different government code sections, that's how you invest in your general fund, which is 53601, versus moving money over into a 115 trust that can be invested per 53216 or 53620. And ultimately, those government codes allow you to diversify your investments as long as they're in approved fashion. That's where Highmark Capital Management, the company I mentioned on that first page, comes in. They actually have five preset portfolios that may be diversified to proven standard, and one again, work with your city to ultimately make recommendations as to how you may want to invest the funds. So let's look at those five different options on this page. So as you'll see, starting at the top, we have capital appreciation. That is the most aggressive strategy, has about 75% in equity, and then right below that, you'll see balanced 50% in equity, and obviously, as you go down, it becomes more conservative. You can see we have the one, three, and five-year returns here. Unfortunately, the one-year returns for December 31st are not, you know, was positive to show you, but January is very mild, so that's the good news. Nevertheless, certainly, it's a reward question. If you want to take on a portfolio that has a higher degree of equity, certainly there might be more volatility versus something that has less equity. And again, this is where the portfolio manager would come in with his or her expertise, talk to you about time horizon, risk tolerance, and get a sense for what the city's future withdrawal needs might be, and that can really help guide into what an appropriate investment might be. For your knowledge, since we get asked the question a lot, what are other cities investing in? Most commonly chosen strategy for pension rate stabilization is to be moderately conservative, has about 40% in equity. A lot of agencies fight the desire to get more return on their money than they would in their general fund, would not take so much risk because they know within the next three to five years, because they're probably going to start drawing up those funds. Most commonly chosen strategy for OPEB adoption is a balanced strategy, which is about 50% in equity. Reason for that is a lot of cities see OPEB as a longer-term liability, typically looking at about 30-year time horizon. So with a, you know, less of a need to draw on those funds in a shorter timeframe, they can potentially take a little longer to check. But again, completely up to your discretion, how you manage that. Next page, we'll go over sample funding policies, and I won't spend too much time on this page, but this... but this just gives the city kind of an idea of how some other cities are addressing the initial funding as well as ongoing funding for a plan like this. To give a couple of very common examples, number one, speak to looking at year-end surplus. Solana Beach and Alameda are examples of cities that basically have opted to take 50% of any realized year-end surplus, assuming there is one, and moved that over to the trust. We have other agencies that have set their general fund reserve levels at a certain percentage. For example, Redwood City that theirs is 15%, and decided that anything above that 15% will get moved over to the trust. We've had other cities like Lendale that have actually opted to lower their general fund reserve level and then take that difference and move it into the trust. So, there's not a necessity to actually set forth funding policy. Not every city does it, but these are just some examples if your city wanted to go down that route. This page goes over the program fees. PARs is very transparent in all of our fees, and all of our fees are based strictly on assets. So, there is actually no cost to getting the trust set up. I know that as we mentioned tonight, the establishment of the trust would be the priority with funding coming down the road. So, if you get the trust set up tonight, we would actually charge you nothing until you actually move money into the trust. The PARs fees start at 25 basis points or .25% for any asset under $10 million. And then Hymer and US Bank fees are combined for assets under $5 million, starting at .35%. So, all in, for all three companies, .6% of assets would be the total cost. There's no cost to, if you wanted to switch investments, there's no training cost, if you are happy with our services, there's no termination cost. Again, everything is certainly based on plan. And then last but not least, this page just gives you an outline on the steps to implementation. Assuming that the council did wish to move forward tonight, the resolution would be adopted to establish a trust, the resolution appoints a plan administrator, and that person has the executive authority to sign off on all of our signature legal documents. Once we get those legal documents back, ultimately, the next step would be for us to come back out with a portfolio manager and start to talk about investment collection. They can make a recommendation, help create an IPS specifically for the 115 trust. At that point in time, again, the conversation would turn to potentially how you want to fund the trust, if you want to set the funding policy. And then after that, PARs would come out and visit with your city at least annually for updates. We bring out the portfolio manager, we can talk about both the admin piece and the investment piece, and we can certainly be available more than once a year if you wanted us to present a handful or meet a staff or otherwise. So, that was what I had for you this evening, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you. Any council comments, questions?
No, totally good.
I'm excited.
Yeah.
This is the work we're talking about, the presentations.
Delrayo, we're just moving right along, making up for bringing this to us. This is very prudent. We're being this way of responsible, and you had a great presentation, and thank you. This is nice.
I just had a question. And I don't know where this document came from, but under the summary and discussion, it says PARs annual fees for assets under $5 million are approximately $26,000. Is that?
That would be over a very large cap.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, so for example, let me give you a simple math. The PARs fees are .25%, so let's say the city put in $1 million, that would be $2,500. So, in that example, I'm thinking that came from a staff report, probably from another agency that put in a very large contribution. Because, yeah, in most cases, we're not paying that type of fee. It is .25% of whatever the total amount.
Yeah, but there's an additional $28,000 in the next column, too.
That, yeah, I'm thinking that was probably pulled from another staff reports that probably had a very high contribution.
And is there, I know that you're not a, the financial person, but you mentioned there are no trading costs, so we went in and we wanted the moderate conservative, and then we changed to conservative, there's no cost.
Correct. Yeah, yes, you can change, and there's no cost to yourself.
Okay.
I'm kind of building on that, though. You only get, you only get five choices, though, right? I mean, these are ten portfolios.
So, technically, there's ten choices, now I'll clarify why. So, there are five model portfolios. Within each of those three portfolios, there is an active and a passive option. And so, if the city wanted to go for, you know, the active model, where the portfolio manager is going to be benchmark, there are higher embedded fees in those funds versus the passive model, you can index fund the terms very low-cost fees. Ultimately, that would be the decision, but yeah, they are the five models.
Right.
Great. Any other comment, question? Any public comments or questions about this item? All right, I'll entertain a question. Do you have a second?
I'll start.
Oh, well, in favor of establishing the 115 area of liquidable trust? All in favor?
Aye.
They opposed? All right, good luck. Wonderful. Now, we're moving on to new business D.
Thank you, Mayor. The next subject before you is evilly exciting to me, and that is to recommend a disposition of the ending fund balance, unassigned fund balance from the end of fiscal year 2018. The recommendation is to add $425,000 to the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty, bringing it to 15% of our annual budget, which is our established goal in our financial policies, and also to authorize paying down $211,519 on our FORA loan, which is currently accruing 5% interest annually, which will enable our FORA rep, Council member, guy to the audience and myself, to negotiate with FORA to reduce that 5% interest as well as making that payment. The fiscal year 2018 audit found an increase of $438,2894 in our general fund fund balance, which brought our unassigned balance to a total of $736,519. Previous, council, previous council decision has already assigned $100,000 of that to an economic uncertainty fund, establishing that fund for the city. And so, the action before you tonight is to dispose of the remainder in two pieces. One, the $425,000, adding $425,000 to the economic uncertainty reserve, and the second piece, authorizing the payment of $211,519 down on the FORA loan. We will return, there are other important things that we could be doing with these balances. We could be funding the 115 trust, we could be paying down more debt, we could be buying solar panels for the city buildings. Based on discussion with staff as well as the budget committee of the council, who's determined that the best use at this time for these funds is to begin paying down that debt FORA loan pending renegotiation, and to build that 15% economic uncertainty reserve, which will retain council flexibility with what to do with that reserve, given where we are in the economy right now, which is to say, we're still in a good economic position, but with some uncertainty certainly in the future. We look forward to returning to council with an ending fund balance of this fiscal year to make additional recommendations regarding what we might fund to the trust, and what we might do with additional payments on debt and potential investment in infrastructure. Any other questions?
Any council questions?
I have to say, I'm so happy that we're able to talk about this. You know, this is, we've come a long way, again, this is something that we've never been able to talk about as a council. So, again, thank you to everybody, to the businesses that are contributing to Delrayo's. Just wanted to say that.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm a strong fan of this. This FORA loan is just across the hand, right now. And it's, I think, in aggregate, it's over $725,000. So, we need to start chipping like that. And it's already come up in a board meeting, you know, hey, Delrayo sold some money, and you know, in this transition, you know, they're going to start saying, okay, when is that? They're going to start on the schedule. So, it'd be better for us to be proactive, go at them, get it principal reduced, and then get interest reduced, and just, you know, handle this liability that we would run the house.
Great. Any public comment on this topic? All right. May I change my motion?
So moved.
So moved. All approve the disposition of the unsigned fund balance? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approved. Now, we're moving on to new business D.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item of business before the council is to consider a cannabis ordinance amendment, which will allow for essentially the removal of the number of permits that currently exist in our ordinance, or current ordinance allows for one retail sales permit, which is the dispensary at the corner, and then a limited number of manufacturing and distribution. What we have found as a practical matter, first of all, the ordinance recommends that we retain the one retail sales permit, so that stays in place, no change. But what we have found with regard to the other types of businesses and the permits is that, is that we don't see a need for a cap. What we're finding is that the limitation of available space in our city with regard to commercial space is a self-limiting factor on the amount of cannabis businesses that can operate. Additionally, we're finding that cannabis businesses that are operating are operating safely, profitably, and virtually invisible. And so, and frankly, providing the city with tremendous revenue allowing us to make decisions that council doesn't make. And so, so a key part of the ordinance amendment is to remove the cap on all types of permits except for retail sales. The other important aspect of the ordinance amendment is to permit two additional uses, which are currently not permitted, and they are a testing lab and indoor commercial cultivation. So, outside commercial cultivation continues to be prohibited, but this would allow indoor commercial cultivation with all of the provisions of odor control, security plan, visibility concerns that we have with the other types of cannabis businesses, fully in place, the staff mechanisms in place that we have that are robust and working well. And so, it would allow us essentially to diversify the sector for the city, it would keep us on what I would characterize as sort of the cutting edge of the cannabis industry in Monterey County, but doing so, continuing to do so in a measured, responsible way.
Okay. Any council comment?
Yeah, I think the key to this is that these are, and they're invisible, you know? Otherwise, I would probably have a big problem with this. So, and again, I'm happy that it's, there's only one retail, so.
Yeah.
And it's going to provide so much income for the city, which we'd be desperate with.
Any public comment on this topic? All right, I'll entertain a question. I approve that we approve amendment number 296. All those are in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ken, I have it. Move on to the last new business, E.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item of new business before the council is tied to direction given to staff during the strategic planning retreat, which was to explore how to attract additional cannabis businesses to the city. What I'd like to briefly outline for the public as well as the council is that a series of events that began shortly after I arrived here with guidance from the council to find someplace new for the RV storage lot, set in motion events that led to an agreement with the airport, the movement of that RV storage lot, continuation of revenue from that RV storage lot, and ultimately, a vacant lot adjacent to City Hall. There have been discussions, very informal discussions amongst the staff about FORTAG having been a project funded by the county in Measure X, and where that might come through our parks, but beyond that, no formal discussions of any kind regarding what we might do with that parcel. Again, informal discussions have mentioned sports courts, bocce ball courts, pickleball courts, potential parking for our park, the Frog Pond there, and the potential for some kind of business that might generate revenue such as the RV storage lot did. We continue to have those discussions regarding the RV storage lot, and I'd like to just bring to the public's attention and the council's attention that we are in discussion with a cannabis business that seeks to establish itself in the city. The proprietor is a Delrayo's resident, and we are continuing those discussions with that business entity, and when they reach fruition of some sort, I'll be returning to the council to describe that, to seek guidance specifically on the nature of whether it be a ground lease or some kind of agreement on the land and how to move forward. And that will be combined with the ongoing discussion about where FORTAG will go through there, what parking we will want as a city for the parks, potential public restrooms for the parks and Frog Pond, and if we can fit it in there, some kind of sports court. Step one in this is the city to continue to do due diligence. The contract you approved tonight regarding engineering survey services will be put to use immediately to survey that parcel, so that we have a good survey and good map to start to have these detailed discussions. So, that's the RV storage portion of the parcel. The public works building portion of the parcel, we have, in about the last six months, been in discussions with one of our cannabis businesses which operates in the light industrial sector about their business growth. That business is Integral Innovations, and Integral Innovations is operating currently in the light industrial sector, again, safely, profitably, and virtually invisible. They are experiencing very dynamic growth in their business, and they seek to remain in the city of Delrayo's, and your staff very much seeks to keep them here. Our early discussions around that growth and encouraging signs of their business growing was to direct them to other landlords in the light industrial area where they might seek and find additional space. We worked with Bruce's Produce, we worked with other tenants there, or rather landlords there, and none of those offered. And so, we found ourselves in a position where we don't have room in the light industrial district to accommodate them in the commercial district, and so, we turned the last several months to the potential use of our public works building. Those talks have now progressed to the point where we, I feel obliged to brief the public and brief the council on the status of those discussions. Integral Innovation seeks to rent our public works building, approximately 1,600 square foot metal shed essentially, for use for two purposes, for to house their packaging operation and their distribution operation. So, two business units would locate there, they would retain their product manufacturing at their current location in the public, in the product manufacturing at their current location in the public, in the light industrial area. Our, our initial discussions about the use of the building with the building official didn't identify any red flags that would prevent us from, from renting that building. Discussions with public works around where we might move the public works, first of all, our public works employee resulted in, in us finding an, an office here in, in City Hall for the employee, and discussions around what to do with the equipment that's currently stored in the public works building has resulted in a couple of options for us that would basically involve smaller equipment sheds either on that parcel down below or right here behind City Hall where we have the other building built for police use to accommodate all of the equipment that's currently in the building. We're also gonna do some spring cleaning because we've got a lot of equipment that we don't need anymore, and that'll be a very, that'll be a good, that'll be very helpful. So we've progressed to this point, and I, I, again, wanna brief the public and brief the council and seek your direction, if it's the council's will, to direct staff to negotiate with Integral Innovations a building lease that would lease them the 1,600 square foot building and enough room around that building for approximately 14 parking spaces and access to the back of the building by, with a, with a van where they can conduct their distribution operation as well. I believe that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
So this is, this is great. So we're looking at official revenues? Possibly, so you have a cap?
Yes, so if the revenue, so we will go, pending your guidance, we will go to closed session to discuss specifics of, of price and terms of a lease, which obviously will be part of the revenue generation. In addition to that, Integral Innovations, as I say, just continues to grow, and as their sales grow, the city profits, the city benefits from the 5 percent cannabis business tax, which they are diligent in paying, and, and that, that they have become the top cannabis business in the city, overtaking the dispensary, which is no small feat. And, and I believe with, given the, my, my understanding of the business projections and the growth in, in space, we can expect our, our tax revenues to grow as well.
And so how many employees do you think will be down here? What's, what's, this is a quick question.
This is not a quarterly planning commission. It will, we expect eight full-time employees in a work shed conducting packaging operations and, and distribution support with vehicles coming only several times a day to, to actually deliver and pick up packaged material, so eight employees on site.
So, yeah.
Right.
Okay, very good.
And the, should you direct council, or should council direct staff to negotiate and we go to closed session and we proceed and we get to a loan, or a lease rather, there will be a public hearing process before the planning commission or a conditional use permit for that location, which will address many of the questions you're, you're raising now, which are good questions. And there will also be a staff process with condition, with the cannabis use permits that will look very closely at security plans, odor control plans, all the things that we look at with all the businesses, and we'll be there in this case.
That sounds great.
No, I'm curious about the terms.
Um, I just want to say thank you for the sensitivity of taking care of our businesses. I want to be, I want Delray Oaks to be seen as business-friendly, and these folks could very easily take this business to South County, probably less expensive, you know, larger property, but as you're seeing, you know, we were finally able to, for the very first time, put some money into an emergency fund. So that is because of the cannabis businesses that we have right now, so I just wanna say thanks for, again, taking care of our businesses.
Any public comment?
I just have a question. Do I have to, do I have to?
Yep. And, and I just wanna say that these are comments, so questions may... Oh, comments. Yeah. It's okay.
I just, I just have a comment.
Who are you?
Debbie Blais, Delray Oaks, I'm involved. I, I think it's great. It's good to hear new businesses coming in and utilizing that space. Normal business hours? I mean, I worked in an industry that worked, you know, 24/7 packaging when I was working. Kind of normal business hours, I mean, not nine-to-fivers, but, you know.
Yes.
The employees coming, hopefully, you know, each time down the block, maybe, but normal business hours, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Clark, Delray Oaks. And I think, you know, Council member Clark already hinted on this, but the traffic of people pulling in and out of that location, I will hopefully see something from the police chief as to the safety of that, because, you know, just personally, the last thing I wanna see is another stop sign in another street, you know? So hopefully that won't generate enough traffic to, to do that, and, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Adam Nader, CEO and founder of Integral Innovation, and I just wanted to mention that, thanks for taking the time to consider this topic and opportunity, lease. We, I've been here for about a year and a half, got a little bit started our company in Delray Oaks, and we, in that time, we've grown tent pole from our first month back over a year ago, it was about $90,000 in revenue, and most recently, a $820,000 in revenue. And we're just really grateful for the community, the openness and community support that, that Delray Oaks has shown us and, and welcomed us there. If we, if we are offered the opportunity to lease our property, we will strive to be as, as good tenants and steward the property as we can, definitely in one, in, as discreet as possible, as, as the community wishes and would like to be. It's a kind of mutually beneficial thing to that discretion, you know, benefit, to bring attention to ourselves, so we try to do that, and we continue to strive for that. And, yeah, we just look forward to that, to an opportunity if that, that you, you offer us one, that. We have, with that, with that tent pole growth, we, we haven't reached our fully maxed out capacity of the building we're in, but we are approaching that, and, and this new location, we're currently in 4,500 square feet, roughly, that's about how much we occupy, and 1,600 square feet additional would, would guarantee, but we would estimate that that would provide we, about, to grow about 25 percent more to, to be able to spread out into that space. And we are choosing, with conversation with you know, we have considered moving our most impact aspects of our business into that space, to the, things that require some of this traffic and noise and things like that, that should be, there, there. And so, and it's also just been great, it's, it's really awesome to hear about some budget aspects and, and that our business is providing some, some benefit to, to the community, to Delray Oaks community, it's a, it's actually really, yeah, I'm glad, I kind of didn't ever hear that, it was, it's really warm to know that, that it is, you know, just our own company. And, and that's all, so thank you, I'll try to have the opportunity, we'll do our best to, 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 to steward some of these, so, maybe that's the best case.
Thanks, Ellen. Any other public comments? Come back.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to negotiate the lease of the city-owned public works building, and here with Integral Innovations LLC, and to consider uses at the city-owned RV lot.
All in the favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That I have it. All right, so now we move into regular public comment.
We...
I read.
Again?
Hey, I'm Delray Oaks. So I, I mentioned before, you know, coming from Carlton, Crenell, and Portola, you know, at the fish pool, I was coming on Portola, that is a caution sign when you come from Carlton. It's either the pea or dry words can't see the sign, because I noticed there are some growth, tree growth growing over there, or they just ignore it, because I know one of these days that's gonna be a severe accident. I see a lot of people when I come from Baywatch, digits fly out and go down Portola. You know, there's, I don't know what to do about it, but I just wanna bring it to your attention, maybe, maybe sign has to be moved, or maybe something has to be done there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we're going to close public comments. The next item is closed session, and as committed by government, section 54956, the council may adjourn to a closed session to consider specific matters dealing with probation personnel and/or labor real property negotiation. Are there any public comments before we go into and about this closed session? Okay, so that's gonna conclude our open session for now. We'll, we're going into a closed session and then we'll return a little bit before now. Hope you can stay. But for now, we need to move to the new please. All right, our senior attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As to both items on closed session, updates were provided to council and direction was given to staff, however, no report will have them stated.
All right, thank you. Last item is correspondence, a letter of thanks from the food bank from Monterey County. And it's in our packet. So on that, next meeting date is Tuesday, March 26th at 6:00 PM. With that, we're adjourned.